I would like to call the April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three regular board meeting to order at six oh four P M. I would ask, uh, Jill Wiggins to do our invocation. Stand.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we're so grateful for your love and your blessings toward us. We're grateful for this school. We ask God that you continue to lead, direct us in the things we should do. I ask, Father, that you're blessed tonight. Um, we're so thankful for so many people being here tonight. We ask you to bless them as well. Watch over their families. Help us to conduct this meeting accordingly and to do your will. We love you and we thank you for all you do. In Christ's name, amen.
Please remain standing. Ms. Amy Gibson, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approve of the agenda, Dr. Goodman. We have amendments to this agenda.
No, sir, we do not.
If I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? The agenda has been approved. Next item on the agenda is recognitions. First, the twenty twenty-three star student, students and finalists. Uh, with Dr. Wendy Arnold, Assistant Principal, Pickens High School.
Good evening. I'm very honored to be here tonight to recognize these fine seniors and their teachers. Um, if we have any star student finalists and teachers present, would you please come And when I call your name, if you'll step forward. Our finalists are Sophia Cave and her star teacher is Jackie Powell. We also have John Carter Wilson and his star teacher is Judith Barber. Kaitlyn Seranthus and her star teacher is Tanya Russo. Grant Hooker and his star teacher is Lisa Payne. Holton Call and his star teacher is Kathy Daymood. Ava Runsey and her star teacher is Keith Petty. Amber Bragg and her star teacher is Deborah Lajewski from Hopewell Middle School. Isabel Lipscomb and her star teacher is Leslie Zidama. Sierra Robertson and her star teacher is Courtney Davis from Hill City Elementary School. And William Hall and his star teacher is Kristy Hobgood. And our star student for this year is Mr. Brandon Bell and his star teacher is Mr. Ted Estes. Congratulations. Thank you. Uh, you can be seated, but we'd like to ask for Brandon Bell and-
Wait, wait, wait. Picture, can I get a picture of him first?
Oh, sorry. And I'm gonna turn it over now to our counselor, Ms. Jana Champion, and she's going to recognize our valedictorian and salutatorian.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Jana Champion. I'm one of the three counselors at the high school. I've had the pleasure of both knowing and working with Brandon Bell and Grant Hooker since they were in sixth grade. They are two incredible individuals and phenomenal students, and they are very deserving of the honor of being, um, the two thousand twenty-three salutatorian, Mr. Grant Hooker, and the two thousand twenty-three valedictorian, Mr. Brandon Bell.
In case anybody is wondering, that means Mr. Bell is the, he is the first person. He is ranked number one in his class and Grant is ranked number two.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members, Madam Superintendent. It's my pleasure tonight to bring forward some students who have achieved great academic success. Schools and community partners have presented these students to us for recognition. Destiny is gonna help me with, um, passing out certificates. We're gonna call the students up by school and have their administrators come forward, and we'll take a group picture by the schools. Okay? So we're gonna go ahead and start with the high school. I have Dr. Wendy Arnold, who's representing the high school. And we have, um, three of her students were recognized at ToneCom. If you're not familiar with that, it's a competition, um, for literary students. After they read books, they create some projects and they go out to a competition. Um, our students went out on March fourteenth to the University of North Georgia to compete. So we have Emily Cooley, Reese Wheeling, and Lila Imbriana. If you'll come up, ladies, and take a picture with Dr. Arnold, that would be great. Next, we'll recognize students from our junior high school. Dr. Rose Nelson, would you come forward and help us recognize the students? We have, um, first is Pearl Fitz. Pearl was, uh, recognized first place for ToneCom, and she also won first place for our county for her Georgia Young Authors, um, story. She's also placed first regionally for that story, and we have not heard yet from state. But, uh, we have Pearl. Then Corbin Addison, who received an honorable mention from the Optimist Club for his essay. Nevea Traul, honorable mention for the Sassafras Literary Contest. Anthony Mendez, he was the first place chapter winner for the D A R American Revolution Essay Contest. Lindsay Shiva, who won second place for the Sassafras Literary Contest, and won first place for the Georgia Young Authors. And then Miranda, um, Waddle, who has an honorable mention from the Georgia Young Authors. Congratulations to our pick and winner. From our Jasper Middle School, Mr. Cory Johnson is gonna come help us. We have a first place chapter winner for the D A R American Revolution Essay Contest. That was Allison Fitzgerald. This one's gonna take a minute. Townsend, um, Rick and Baker, are you here? Where's Townsend? All right. Townsend, first place chapter winner, D A R American Revolution Essay Contest. Second place, Optimist Club Essay Contest. Third place, Poetry, Sassafras Literary Contest. First place at the school level for the Scripps National Spelling Bee. She competed at the regional level and was a top finisher. She also placed first place at the school level for Behavior Sciences Science Fair. Received an honorable, um, mention from the regional level and participated in state. Nice job, Townsend. Caroline Jones, first place, nonfiction, the Sassafras Literary Contest. Abigail Benton, second place, nonfiction, Sassafras Literary Contest. Autumn Ridings, third place, nonfiction, Sassafras Literary Contest. Asher Faron, honorable mention, nonfiction, from the Sassafras Literary Contest. Kylie Haynes, third grade, third place fiction, Sassafras Literary Contest. Aleah Pike, honorable mention from the Sassafras Contest. Lily Grizzle, honorable mention from the Sassafras Literary Contest. Gracie Ledford, honorable mention from Sassafras Literary Contest. Selena Lance, honorable mention from Sassafras Literary Contest. Draven Ponder, honorable mention from Sassafras Literary Contest. Emma Dedelius, first place for the county and first place for the regional for the Georgia Young Authors Story. Sean McCool, first place for the county for Georgia Young Authors. And Parker Stiles, for national honor roll for the Noick National Math Contest. He scored in the top ten percent of students in his grade level from across the country. There were five thousand five hundred ninety fifth graders that participated in the contest. His score was in the top five. You probably need to get a little closer together, and I know your proud principal wants to be part of that picture. Okay, next up is Hill City. I know Ms. Helkum and Ms. Kretschmer, where? Stayed right, they're coming. Okay, so some of their students haven't re, haven't been notified of these awards yet, and they're about to hear it for the first time. All right. Second grader, Anna Hernandez, won first place for the short story for the D A R Junior American Citizens Contest. She placed first in the state and first place in the southeast region. That's Florida, Georgia, Alabama, South Carolina, I think. And she is in the national competition, although we don't know the winners of that yet. Pretty big accomplishment for a second grader. Scarlett Hopkins was the first place stamp entry for the D A R Junior American Citizens Contest. Braylon Howard was first place for the poster from third grade. Fourth grade, Heath Patterson, first place for the stamp entry. Fourth grade, Riley Reddick, received first place for the short story for our, um, chapter. She won first place for the state and second place regionally. Third grade, Samuel Schreiber, first place for the stamp for D A R, um, Junior American Citizen. Fourth grade, Brianna Stanley, first place for poetry for the D A R Junior American Citizen. Third grade, Grayson Stewart. Grayson won first place for the short story in the D A R Junior American Citizen. Grayson, you also won first place for the state and first place for the southeast region, and your, um, story has been sent to the national competition. Second grade, Matt Vaughn, first place for the poster for the D A R Junior American Citizen. Fourth grade, Carter Gramling, first place for the poster, D A R Junior American Citizen. And finally, first, um, grade Kate Mason, first place for the county for the Georgia Young Author. Sorry, it's taking a second here while you guys take your picture. Your proud principal and your future principal are ready to take-
Act like you like each other.
Thank you. We'll keep you posted on those national competitions. Um, Tate Elementary School had a student to recognize tonight. The student couldn't be here, so we'll make sure her proud principal, Stephanie Hall, gets her certificate. That's second grader, um, Grace Garland, who won first place for the Georgia Young Authors for our county. All right. Harmony Elementary. Ms. Callahan. All right, Mr. Hunter, you're coming up?
You have confidence.
They'd like a grand entrance from the junior. All right, very good. Um, from Harmony Elementary School, third grader Natalie Chapman won first place for our county and first place for regional for the Georgia Young Authors, which means she's competing at the state level, and we don't know that. That's, um, she's here. We have fourth grader Olivia Olson. Olivia won first place for the county and first place for regional for Georgia Young Authors, so she is also competing at the state level, and we don't know her position in that yet. And finally, Bianca Wirtz, first place for the county from kindergarten for Georgia Young Authors.
That's fantastic. That's one of our favorite parts of any meeting, any program, is to get to see students up here, about their fantastic achievements. And Mr. Chris Wallace, Chief Operations Officer, will now tell us thumbed out achievements with Heart Safe Student Set.
Board members, Dr. Goodman, it's my honor to introduce a special guest we have with us this evening. Marnell Dejour, has been a professional registered nurse for fifteen years and is the Regional School Nurse Coordinator at Children's Healthcare of Atlanta. In her role, she manages the school health program, where her vision is to serve as the pediatric clinical resource expert for school nurses and school health personnel. Through the school health program, Marnell hosts webinars and quarterly leads school nurse meetings. She also manages the Georgia School Health Resource Manual and coordinates the annual School Health Leadership Conference. Marnell's passion for children's well-being motivates and drives her efforts to ensure that school health personnel have the resources they need to provide the best care possible to the kids they serve. Marnell has two wonderful kids of her own, Michael and Myla, and a sassy dog named Gemma. In her spare time, Marnell is active in her church and is the cheerleading director for the Second Year Athletic Association. For this time, will you join me in welcoming Ms. Marnell Dejour up here to make the presentation?
Perfect. Um, good evening, and thank you, Chris, for that introduction. I am truly honored to be here to present all six public schools within Pickens County, the Heart Safe Designation through Project Save in, on behalf of Children's Healthcare of Atlanta. Um, I'm not sure if you guys are aware of what Project Save is, so I'll just tell you a little bit about the program. Project Save was created in two thousand and four with the mission of preventing sudden cardiac arrest in children, teens, and young adults in Georgia communities. The SAVE in Project Save stands for Sudden Cardiac Arrest, Awareness, Vision for Prevention, and Education. Through Project Save, we aim to educate and train people to feel equipped to handle a sudden cardiac arrest emergency. Any community in Georgia can become Project Heart Safe, uh, Project Heart Safe community. So again, I am really, really thrilled to say that six schools-
Thank you, guys.
-all six schools are heart safe, um, will receive this designation tonight. So I am great, 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 um, and happy to present that to you guys. Um, so again, I would like to thank Gail Smith and her absence for facilitating and making sure that the checklist and all the requirements were met by each school for this recognition. And the requirements that needed to be met were that, um, so they had to identify a program coordinator to be a point of contact with Project Save, obtain and maintain an A E B and first responder kit, create a cardiac emergency action plan, conduct annual staff awareness training, create a designated cardiac emergency response team, maintain C P R and A E B certification for that team, and then also, every year, they have to conduct an annual practice drill. So again, without further ado, I would like to present a banner that you guys can definitely hang at your schools and a certificate to, um, showcase your designation. So I'm gonna kinda, I brought, I have lots of them, and I think they wanted a picture as I present, just to the principals. All right, let's see. Jasper Middle School?
Congratulations.
Thank you. And I have Tate Elementary School?
Congratulations.
Hill City Elementary School?
You are so welcome.
Pickens County High School?
And thank you all for having me. This was my first time in Pickens County.
Before we go to the superintendent reports, if you were here for recognition, those are over. Go to dinner. Thank y'all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is superintendent reports. Financial update from Ms. Amy Smith, Chief Financial Officer.
We do not have a certificate for you. I am very sorry. We'll see what we can do.
Perfectly fine. You have a certificate, so I won't audit it.
Okay, make it there.
I will be nice.
While, while people are filing out, I will give you an update on audit while, while we're, uh, in here today. We have currently three active audits going on. Um, that's not normal, but, uh, we have the Georgia Department. Thank you, I got a certificate.
Taken care of, it's a good job.
Uh, we have three active audits going on. The F Y twenty-two Georgia Department of Audit and Accounts Audit is still going. We have been working on it since February twenty-third. All is going well so far, as far as I know. Um, they are wrapping up, uh, so I'm hoping that will end some of the requests. Um, Audit Two and Three are T R S and Public School Retirement, which we have not done in the twenty-two years that I've been here, but these are new this year, um, so it's been interesting. We sent information to them about three weeks ago, and I got the first question, uh, Monday, so, or Tuesday. So we'll work with them. We've gotta provide a few small things now. We already did the brunt of that, so I'm hoping that will die down too. Monday, we start the federal monitoring, which is a massive endeavor and thousands upon thousands of pages of information that has to be scanned and uploaded. So we are, by Friday, when we leave here, hopefully, we will have everything that they have asked for ready to go for them to write, or to begin on Monday, and it will be, they conduct it typically off-site. Now, most of them do off-site and come on-site just maybe a day. So we have a lot of activity, uh, downstairs in the basement, so please ignore the screams and cries, um, but it is actually going very well. Um, it is a lot for a short period of time, so, uh, we'll just keep going with that, and we have fantastic staff. Um, everybody that's involved in working on all this paperwork that we have to do is require, you know, all the requirements. We have, everybody in the department is doing something. It's not their normal job, but everybody's chipping in, and I appreciate that, and I wanna say that publicly. I've called schools, I've called departments for Scarlet and federal programs. I've talked to at least four thousand times in the past four days, so I appreciate everybody's help and everybody chipping in, and, um, hopefully, we will get final reports in the next month or two, and everything will be fantastic, I feel sure. Okay, we'll go over our general fund revenue collected through the end of March twenty twenty-three is seventy-six point five-two percent of our budgeted revenue. Expenditures are sixty-two point five percent of our approved budget. Uh, don't get too excited. I always remind y'all, come June, we'll have- Audit two and three are TRS and Public School Retirement, which we have not done in the 22 years that I've been here, but these are new this year, so it's been interesting. We sent information to them about three weeks ago, and I got the first question Monday, or Tuesday. So we'll work with them, we've gotta provide a few small things now. We already did the brunt of that, so I'm hoping that will die down too. Monday, we start the federal monitoring, which is a massive endeavor and thousands upon thousands of pages of information that has to be scanned and uploaded. So we are, by Friday, when we leave here, hopefully we will have everything that they have asked for ready to go for them to write, or to begin on Monday, and it will be, they conduct it typically off-site now. Most of them do off-site and come onsite just maybe a day. So we have a lot of activity downstairs in the basement, so please ignore the screams and cries, but it is actually going very well. It is a lot for a short period of time, so we'll just keep going with that, and we have fantastic staff. Everybody that's involved in working on all this paperwork that we have to do, it's required, you know, all the requirements, we have, everybody in the department is doing something. It's not their normal job, but everybody's chipping in, and I appreciate that, and I wanna say that publicly. I've called schools, I've called departments for Scarlet and federal programs, I've talked to at least four thousand times in the past four days, so I appreciate everybody's help and everybody chipping in, and hopefully we will get final reports in the next month or two, and everything will be fantastic, I feel sure. Okay, we'll go over our general fund revenue collected through the end of March 2023 is seventy-six point five-two percent of our budgeted revenue. Expenditures are sixty-two point five percent of our approved budget. Don't get too excited, I always remind y'all, come June, we'll have three payrolls for all those non-twelve months' votes, so there's not an abundance of money out there, but everything is on track, other than we do have a budget amendment out for you today, and we'll get to that in just a little bit. Our fund, our consolidation of funds, Fund 150 reflects expenditures through March, and those transfers have been made through February. Of course, that, like I said before, it runs on a two- or three-week delay after the end of the month, so that's why by the time we have this meeting, it's not quite ready for us to do that transfer. School system still has no debt. Our SLOSS revenue for March was six hundred twenty-three thousand, five hundred twenty-one dollars and seventy-nine cents. We earned the interest of seven hundred eighty-six dollars and thirty cents. Expenditures totaled seven hundred ninety-four thousand, two hundred thirty-five dollars, and the month-end SLOSS balance was nine million, eight hundred twenty-two thousand, four hundred eight dollars and thirty-three cents. Special revenue funds, which are federal grants, school nutrition program and, and school nutrition program, we've collected sixty-nine point nine-five percent of our budgeted revenue and have expended seventy-eight point four-nine percent of those budgeted expenditures. Just remind you too that those are whole grants, we have to spend the money first before we can ask for reimbursement. That is why expenditures are higher than revenue. Do y'all have any questions on that part? That's maybe.
Maybe.
Okay. The other report that's out there is our quarterly school activities count report. These are numbers from the school, local school accounts. We are required to present this report to you quarterly for your review and approval. It gets broken down by school, beginning balance, revenues during the quarter, expenditures during the quarter, and then their final balance at quarter end. So I leave the whole year out there so you can see the progress during the year. Y'all have any questions on any of these reports? Thank you very much.
And while you're up there, just in the interest of time, would you could and go over the budget amendment?
Certainly. We have a budget amendment request for our FY23 budget. There are a couple different pieces, and if you had a chance to read the write-up, I'd wanna make sure you understand everything. It is a little confusing because it's different pots of money. We're asking for an amendment to general fund for M&amp;O. We have a couple of situations that by year end, we could run over budget. So one of them is, we are asking for our flood damage we had at Pickens High School Field House back in December. You know, we had an open insurance claim for that. We do not have the final numbers, but we are, we're close. We are having to spend money now, and we'll get reimbursed later, but we are estimating that we will receive around two hundred thousand dollars, so I need to amend the revenue for local to add two hundred thousand, and I need to add two hundred in expenditure to M&amp;O, because that's where all the expense is going. Right now, it is distorting the M&amp;O budget just a little bit, and we need to get that, go ahead and get that cleared up. I don't think that two hundred thousand is going to be off very much. We know it's up to at least a hundred and eighty-eight, and we will have, we've got a few items that aren't finished yet that should take up the other eighteen thousand, so that should be close enough to take care of us for the rest of the year. But we're have, I need to get his budget back where he can spend money. The other thing we're asking for in M&amp;O also is we'd like to add an additional two hundred fifty thousand from within the budget. It does not increase the budget as a whole. We have some unspent money in instruction, in benefits, and we would like to move it to M&amp;O to cover. We're very conservative when we budgeted for our electricity and gas bills. We used prior to-year average, we've added some, some buildings. We budgeted eight hundred fifty thousand. Running on the current average, we're gonna exceed that budget by seventy to a hundred thousand, and it is simply usage and increased cost for gas per therm or power per kilowatt price. It, like everything else, the price is increasing. The usage, I sampled several months from the prior year, they're very similar. What I'm very concerned, I think it could go seventy to a hundred thousand over, and that range is because if we stay on the current average, if temperatures stay mild, we'll stay more around eighty thousand a month. If they go, if it gets very hot in May or June, it can push it more toward a hundred thousand, and we have so many buildings and so much volume of space, you know, if that temperature spikes ten degrees, it does cause those expenses to go up. Just wanna make sure we have enough money to cover that by year end. So it's a, also, in general, of course, we've had a changeover of our chief of that area. We had quite a few things at the beginning of the year that we were doing that were more expensive. All of our supplies and materials just about across the board have increased. We tried to hold these costs down. We were very hopeful we would be able to do that. We're conservative at the beginning of the year, and a lot of times we do have to do an amendment, but I know in the back of my mind, we don't typically spend everything everywhere, especially when it comes to benefits. I have to budget it, but if people don't use, in particular, state health, there are large chunks of money that we can use somewhere else, and at this point in the year, that's when I can start reallocating money. We still, we're gonna have some things about this new state health thing. I just got some midterm information, we've gotten some information last week and this week, we're still going through how it's going to be handled and what the total cost will be. We might have to amend later to cover some of that, but right now, we're comfortable moving that two fifty from instruction, from benefits, to M&amp;O, because we're gonna get most of the revenue that's gonna come with the new state health expense. So I haven't been able to work through all of that because I'm not clear on exactly what they're doing. They had a webinar, I got notified twenty minutes after it was over that they were having the webinar, so I got the PowerPoint today and the video today, so we'll be going through that to see how that's going to work. But we would, we would like to add that two fifty to the budget to cover the electricity and gas increase and then basic supplies. It is not anything that qualifies for SLOSS either. These are not capital outlay items, I can't shift it to a different budget. These are regular, run-of-the-mill, run-every-day items, so I can't shift it to SLOSS, and I figured that would be a question for you, from y'all. The other item we're asking for is basically a housekeeping item. I don't know if y'all remember, but in some of the construction projects, there were some items that wound up being purchased outside of a construction contract instead of inside. Inside the contract, it comes out of capital outlay, which is function four thousand. When it's outside, most of the time, it falls in twenty-six hundred M&amp;O. I just need to move a hundred thousand from one spot to another. Doesn't increase the budget, it's a housekeeping item. One example is the hog pens, they were a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. We had another item that was a Georgia Power item that had to do with an outside life. When you do go outside that contract and it is not a fixed asset, I can't code it as though it is. I must follow state regulations on those definitions. So it is a housekeeping item just to get that budget cleaned up and to allow Mr. Wallace to continue spending his money, because it's in the wrong place right now. So if, do y'all have any questions about that?
Quick question, Mr. Wallace, on the decision that was made by the PIN separately and the FER separately, I wanna say we saved about forty thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, the construction management fee plus taxes, because it's, construction manager buys it, we don't get the tax-free, we have to pay sales, they have to pay sales tax. They can't use our tax exempt status to, because they're a private company, so, to get rid of the sales tax. So there's, their fees plus sales tax. So yeah, it was considerable, we start seven percent here, three percent there, it adds up.
Yeah, that was considerable savings, and then the project itself, still gonna come in rough math, three to four hundred thousand dollars under budget, even if you include these items?
Yeah, it was originally sixteen, around there.
The change order was four hundred and thirty-five?
Yeah, four hundred and thirty-five thousand is the change order.
So you net out those two items?
Still two sixty.
Yeah. So we still, we save money by doing this, and we still came in well under our gross, our guaranteed maximum price.
I just wanted to make sure that was cleared, everybody has to, to some of the reasons for doing it that way.
Right. There are advantages to doing that, it's just at the beginning, when we were doing this in May and June of last year, we thought it was gonna be within those contracts, and so when we, when we did not do it in that, we just needed to move the money. And we, we thought we might be able to swing it without doing this, but we've had those HVAC issues come up, we're trying to replace, I know at least forty-four thousand dollars in units between now and June, and there may be more. This will open the door to let him do those things. So right now, he does not have the funds to do that, because it just needs to be moved from function to function. And I did a summary on the explanation, just trying to show you, on the actual report that you approved, any item that changed is in bold italics, so you'll see a revenue item that changed by two hundred thousand, and each item I just, I was talking to you about, they're in bold italics, and you can see the change in those items. The only item that increases any budget as a whole is the insurance issue, and it's because we're getting revenue and expense, so it will inflate those.
Thank you. Yes, Smith. Next item is operations and construction update with Chris Wallace, Chief Operations Officer.
Thank you, Board members, Dr. Goodman, appreciate the opportunity to show you guys, tell you guys what we've got going on in our multiple departments. First of all, with maintenance, maintenance department, as always, is very busy, especially this past month, one hundred and thirty-nine requests from the schools, and so far this year, I've got twelve hundred fifty-one total school requests through our maintenance department, and that timeframe for the monthly was from three-ten to four-twelve. So appreciate those guys and all they do to keep us running safely and effectively. On our facilities update, I'm gonna start out talking about the insurance claim a little bit more. Working with two different adjusters, they've been really good to work with, they're just really busy, there was a lot of claims during that time, we were not the only ones that had freezing weather, of course, so they're still dealing with a lot of the, a lot of claims, and they're a little bit, a little bit backlog, so they have processed about a hundred thousand dollars worth of payments that, you know, is already on its way to us, so, for the Field House, and that's good news, so that'll help us out when that, when that arrives. So basically, we're waiting on the contents to be approved, so we had given a detailed list of anything and everything that was damaged, and so a lot of this stuff was purchased by, like, Bush Club, you know, headsets and electronics and things, so, you know, Coach Meyer's been working with us, and he helped, he was very instrumental in getting all those, those things together, so just, it's just the process, and it takes a little while. If you've ever had an insurance claim, you know how that works. The Extraordinary Enhancement Project for PHS, we did complete, or they did complete the survey down there for the site prep, and we should have that back any day, really, they said in mid-April, for, for both of these items and the drawings for the single story. As soon as I get those, I'll pass those along to Dr. Goodman, who will share those with you, and, you know, we'll get the floor plan and the elevations to be able to see what that could actually look like down there. The Signal and Dragon Drive, as you know, we did get that installed, DOT's been really helpful, and they, I think they moved as fast as they could, we were a little held up just getting it approved, but once it was approved, they were out there and taking care of it in the rain, so they were glad to get that wrapped up for us. The only issues we've had, we had a little issue this afternoon, it happened every day, but the sensor for turning left out of Dragon Drive has been a little bit of an issue, and the buses were hung up there a little bit today. I was at the junior high, waiting for the buses there, and it took them a little longer to get there, and that was the issue, I heard it on radio. So I have already contacted DOT about making some adjustments or whatever to the sensors that we need to make sure that it's not an issue. Have had a couple of reports of the delay coming through that intersection from other folks too, so they're gonna be checking that out and hopefully getting that straightened out. The last thing on our facilities I wanted to mention was, we do have a new manager through ABM. I have met her, she came to us from a similar role in a neighboring county, and met with her and her boss today, actually, and she, I think is gonna be really good for us and seems to have a really good understanding of what our expectations are for our buildings, and of course, the, the school employee who we have is the, the connection liaison to the administration. We getting, getting him up to speed, he has already had several conversations with her. So I am optimistic that that's gonna work out well, and I look forward to working with those folks going forward. Transportation, we have got our Thomas buses in service now. They actually have the typical four cameras, and then the newer package has five, has an additional camera, which is a dash camera view, so we will have a dash camera view on these buses as well. And we are going to, in the next few months, be talking about what we're going to do to cycle out some of the older buses and how we want to sell those or auction those off. Had somebody contact me today about an interest in those, so we are gonna be looking at that and probably bringing it to you here in the next few months. I have not been through that process, so I wanna make sure I get with Ms. Smith and help make sure we do that the right way. Looking at, with transportation, the real focus right now within the department and meeting with advisory councilors here in the next couple of weeks, putting together a matrix so that they can have input on the discipline on the buses, and then also the administrators in the schools who will be helping administer the discipline, and having a progressive system that everybody knows and understands, and there's no question about, you know, first offense, second offense, whatever. And then the students and the parents and guardians, of course, have the information so they know what the expectations are, more of the best practices handbook-type resource for them. So all of that's being worked on through our department. And then, of course, we certainly use some more drivers, if you know anyone, we're looking for some good folks who would like to help us out in that capacity. Got a school nutrition update from Beth Thompson, and Beth's with us tonight, so if you have some questions specifically about some of this, she wanted me to mention that School Nutrition Hero Day is May 5th, and the whole week is dedicated to School Nutrition Employee Appreciation Week. We also have a couple of grants. One is from the USDA to purchase needed kitchen equipment for Jasper Middle School, and then a commercial warehouse storage and delivery cost reimbursement grant, and the purpose of that grant is to reduce the cost of handling of USDA foods, and then a supply chain assistance grant from the USDA that we've been receiving over the last year, and that is intended to help us overcome barriers and operate, our financial and operational barriers, it says with, while maintaining children's access to nutritious meals. So there's a lot of money that Beth has to capture for a lot of different things in a lot of different ways. She does an excellent job in every way, but capturing that money is a big deal for us, and she has done a great job in that area too. And then it talks about, you know, the funds that she could capture for that last grant, being used for domestic unprocessed or minimally processed food items such as local produce and milk. And then we've had several requests for a way to donate money electronically to help pay school unpaid school lunch debt, and for those families in need, and proud to report that an account has been set up on My Payment Plus, which is our online payment processor to provide the community with an option for making donations electronically. So that's gonna be a big help too, and I know Beth is excited to see what that generates, that's a big deal.
Oh, excuse me? Do you, have you already put this on the website perhaps, or do you have plans to do that?
Yes, it was just put on social media yesterday, and, and then we'll do, I wanted to kick it off in the board meeting, and we've already had, I don't know, six or seven people donate.
Yeah, I've got the website written on my sticky note already, so.
And my add, since we've got all our administrators here all by and large, get that on your pages if you would, if you don't mind, 'cause that'd really help, I think. Promote it, and pin them there.
I apologize for the interruption.
No, you're good. No, I agree, and we got, probably gonna be recognizing, we don't have it all worked out yet, but we do have a couple of local donations that are significant that we're gonna be recognizing at some point coming up, we're gonna bring in front of you guys that I'm excited about in that area as well. Gail Smith couldn't be with us this evening, or she would have been introducing our guest from Children's Healthcare of Atlanta. Really excited about that heart health designation for our schools, so I wanna, again, commend the schools for being willing to participate in that, and you just never know, we have emergencies from time to time, we had, actually had one earlier today and everything as well, but you just never know with the number of people we have in our buildings every day. So Martha's put up the Health Services Report for March, and those top boxes kinda show you the telehealth and then the clinic visits, and then the scoliosis screening over on the right-hand side there in the yellow, and then she put a special section in the middle about the Heart Safe schools, and basically gives some numbers on the staff members who have enrolled in, in this designation and been part of this, and then the response team members, and each school has its response team, and they've detailed that out. And each school has its response team and they've detailed that out. We know who those folks are. And then the first aid classes and skills sessions there and the AED first aid for, from RED cross-certified staff. So all of this is part of, not only student health, but also safety and security. Big part, I know we start thinking of safety being, you know, the obvious things, the threats. But a lot of this falls under another area for me. And I'm really proud of what they're doing in these schools to make sure our kids are taken care of and safe. And then she got a little more detail about student health indicators down at the bottom. But yeah, got to make sure these kids are taken care of. So they're doing a great job and I appreciate Gail Smith's work. And I want to say thank you to Amy for giving that very detailed explanation of what we're trying to do in our budget there and make sure that we are able to take care of some things. We haven't really hit hot weather yet and I know we're going to be coming up on some more replacement issues as we cut these air conditioners on here in the next couple of months. Or really, next couple of weeks, but running for the next couple of months. So any questions or anything I can answer by my own report?
Oh, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And I know this because I have a child at the high school and so he tells me when he's negative in lunch money, never before. But if we have someone that wants to, say a church, that wants to donate money to some of the kids that have negative accounts, can they do that without having a My Payments Plus account? Can they come see you or?
Certainly.
Okay.
Yes.
So we need to kind of put that out as well because not everyone has an account.
Right. And it was designed to, visitors can actually create an account. So like, I don't have an account, but I'm creating an account, so that I can donate.
Gotcha.
But we were just asked electronically ways for people to be able to contribute money with a credit card. But as Chris mentioned, we have some big contributions coming in. And those are some of the old-fashioned, right, the big old checks. So we're happy to take that as well.
Good.
But I will be sure to put that on our website all the different ways.
Great.
And I believe we've got $1,000 already in hand. And I think we're expecting about $5,000 more from a connection to the same, from the same donor. So that's very significant when you're talking about, you know, what kind of money we're seeing. And this is kind of an odd year, as we talked about earlier in the, you know, through our earlier board session, just with the changing over from everyone qualifying to now we've got to get back in the form process. So it's a little tough, but we're going to get through it. And we really appreciate our community folks who want to step up and help if they can. That's a huge deal for these folks. Anyone else? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Next item is curriculum update with Beth Michell, Director Montilla, and assessment.
Good evening. It is a busy time for us in curriculum and instruction. I've created a PowerPoint to help us move through this information tonight. It is a lot of information. We're going to focus on Georgia's Beacon Benchmark Assessment that we use. This is only one measurement that we use. And we use this one in particular because it is aligned to the Georgia standards. We give it at the beginning of the year, middle of the year, and the end of the year. And those are the abbreviations there, to students in grades three through eight. For the Beacon, there are three performance levels, support needed, near target, and prepare. Within those three performance levels, there are nine performance bands. So it continues to grow. Students are considered on track when they are performing in the near target performance level band five at the center of the score range. So to explain that, in band five, there's a start and an end number that they provide to us. And in the center of that is where they expect our students to be performing. This on-track range of numbers changes by subject and at every grade level. So you have to calculate those mid-ranges multiple times. Data is available to teachers to show where students are performing by subject and by domain. And it gives the teacher information to let them know if they are prepared, on target, or if they need additional support. This is year one that we have used this program across the district. So there are no specific growth expectations. And I will talk about growth from fall to spring in just a minute, by grade level. There are no specifications for that at this time, just performance classifications that they have provided to us. At the end of this year and through the early summer, we will evaluate all of our benchmark tools that we use and determine which of those is the most reliable instrument to provide us the most accurate data in measuring student mastery of standards. So that, right now, for example, we may give three math benchmarks, some that maybe we have been using and so we're adding in some others because we do want to use a single reliable instrument, but we have to find that first. This is third grade information. All schools have shown a 13% to 18% growth from fall to spring, third grade LA. In math, a 19% to 30% growth from fall to spring. I have there on the bottom of the district. So when you look at the mean scale score for our district that comes from the other three schools, or from the three schools, we are at or near a level of knowledge and skills just sufficient to be associated with success in the next greater course. So we are hitting that mid-band five where we need to be. So.
And yours is not over yet.
And yours is not over. Next up, this is fourth grade, LA. The schools are showing an 8% to 13% growth from fall to spring. Math, 14% to 20% growth from fall to spring. And again, we're at that mid-band five where we need to be at this point. Fifth and sixth grades, both grades have shown a 6% to 9% growth from fall to spring in the LA. And 11% to 15% growth in math from fall to spring. I have a note there, the math 11% only represents 2/3 of the students. Our benchmark window does not close officially until tomorrow. So then we'll have some time to do some makeups as well. So that number, we anticipate, will go up. Seventh and eighth grade students, both grade levels have shown a 7% growth from fall to spring. In math, a 13% to 17% growth from fall to spring. And again, we're on target for that. More information, our IXL math data that we've looked at so far shows that our students that are on or above grade level has risen from fall to spring. Georgia Milestones will begin on May 1st for Jasper Middle School, their first step. And it will continue throughout the month for all schools for both end-of-grade and end-of-course tests. A parent notification letter containing information and schedules will go home on Monday to parents and just let them know the entire district's schedule. And it also goes into detail and explains what we use the Georgia Milestone scores to do, how it really is used in our school buildings to do things like identify, you know, gifted students, to determine areas where maybe our instruction is not as strong as it needs to be. So that is important. So we want to make sure we get that message out to families. Georgia Milestone results will be coming in toward the end of May. Teachers will be able to share those results with students and parents. They are not embargoed as preliminary data. Some results, though, such as the district and state numbers, are embargoed. So we will not be able to share, like, reset comparisons or anything like that. We will have the data, but we just can't share it publicly until the state releases it because it's embargoed. Thinking Maps continues to develop and enhance student organization of thoughts, which impacts their writing. Our goal this year is for grades five and six to have no zeros on their writing portion of Georgia Milestones. Mrs. Wilkins, over the summer, when she came on board, that was one of the first things that she looked at. And I think she would probably speak to this, Mr. Thompson could as well, that from the fall to the most recent writing assessment, these students have shown phenomenal changes in their ability to write. And I think Mrs. Wilkins, as she's gone into other schools, has taken some of those samples and the teachers are like, this is really fifth grade? So even other schools are excited to know those students are coming forth. But that is our goal. And the NTSS district team will be presenting leading PLCs at work district-wide, from boardroom to classroom, to Dr. Goodman. I think some of you have, or all of you have been invited to come. So we hope that you'll be able to come and hear that presentation in a couple of weeks. We're really excited to share that work. Do you have any questions?
A lot of good information.
One thing I do want to say, in talking about the writing, Beacon does not have a writing assessment for us to practice. So really, the focus through these scores is just without the writing component that we're really excited about, what our scores are going to look like. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm extremely excited. I think I speak for the whole board. And I want to relate to everyone who is involved in our schools in some of these results, administrators, teachers. Please relate that to all of your staff. I'm excited the board is to be getting some of those numbers. Thank you very much. Next, on the agenda, action items. Approval of personnel. Do I have a motion to approve personnel action report as presented? Do I hear a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor? Approval of the FY '23 budget amendment as Ms. Smith presented to us?
I'll take that motion.
Ms. Finley?
I'll second that motion.
Ms. Gibson? Any discussion? Request for the IFB food and distribution bid for MAG 515. Do I have a motion to approve the food and service distribution? Do we want a clear explanation of that before I ask for a motion? Did everybody read? Do I have a motion to approve the food and distribution bid submitted by Cisco Atlanta for MAG 515?
Sent in.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Next item is consent agenda. That might be foreign to you, but as board chair and training, I made the determination we're going to use a consent agenda, which was used for many years until, I believe, Dr. Perry became our superintendent some years ago. This is basically, will contain a bunch of housekeeping items such as field trips, that sort of thing, a single time during the meetings. It is in no way ever to be used as a way to slip anything by. This is simply housekeeping items and I assure you, that's all it will be. May I have a motion to approve the following items contained in this consent agenda? Financial reports, out-of-state field trip, Dragonite basketball, out-of-state overnight field trip for Dragons and Nets basketball, TSA students attending out-of-state competition, minutes from the following board meetings, March 9th call meeting, March 9th regular board meeting, March 10th call meeting, March 23rd call meeting, March 30th call meeting, budget workshop and work session, April 6th call meeting, surplus from Hill City Elementary and Pickens Junior High. There'll be one vote on all of those items. May I have a motion to approve the following items containing the consent agenda?
I have a motion to approve.
Do I hear a second? Ms. Gibson? Is there any discussion? All in favor? The next item is public participation. Dr. Goodman, do we have any requests for public participation at this point?
We had no requests.
And the next item is board comments.
Hey, just a lot of great things tonight, test scores, achievements. So thank you to all of our staff, administrators, great job. It's great to see those successes and so thank you for all you do.
And I might be a little biased, being a Dragon graduate, but we've got some of the best people here. And some of the best kids here. So it's very touching to see that.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming. And I'd like to thank you for your efforts to get so many good reports at this meeting. Give me a little horse, I've battled Ron Kavis all week and I'm trying to finish this out. Thank you for bringing those wonderful students in here tonight so we can recognize them. I appreciate it. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Don't move. Do I hear a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor? Five oh. We are adjourned at 7:10 PM.